It being six o'clock, I called the March 2022 Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting to Order. For roll call, it looks like all members are present except for Board Member Spence. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong end, I apologize. Board Member Bennett. Apologize, sir. Board Member Bennett. With that being, we'll move to item two on the, item two on the agenda. Is there an adjustment of the agenda needed? If there are none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
I just wanted, I looked at the agenda of minutes.
I'm sorry, how's that? Okay. When I looked for the minutes on the agenda under highlighted link, there wasn't a highlighted link for the minutes on mine. Was I just odd? I couldn't find the minutes.
The minutes for the last meeting actually have, are not quite complete yet, so they, you will see them on next month's agenda.
I was, I was bringing that up, I think there was some staff changes in the planning department that led to that. Okay.
Yeah, we've had, with the retirement of our town clerk, we have lost the assistance of the town clerk's office to be able to help us take minutes for the meeting, and so Bruce Venable, our Planner One trainee, will be helping out, taking minutes and preparing agenda packets. But with that transition, we were not able to complete the minutes for the, for last meeting prior to this meeting. So, next meeting, you should have two sets of minutes to approve.
We'll table that to next one. Do we need a motion to table to approve all the minutes? Okay, thank you. Also, just for, for the record, Board Member Bennett did arrive, so we have a full quorum for the members of the planning board. Next item on the agenda is new business. We're gonna, the item is text amendment 2022-51-0A, uses of public facilities. We're now here for staff.
All right, good evening, Board. My name is Aaron Pritchard. I'm Planner Two in the planning department, here to present on a proposal for an ordinance amendment to the UDC. The amendment would allow temporary uses in public facility zoning districts, that's PF zoning. Sorry if there's any feedback. We're proposing the amendment to be in Article Two of the UDC under subsection 202, that's land use regulations. It would be more accurate to call it a, an addition rather than amendment. We're actually not changing any language in the code. We're just proposing to add another section. The purpose is to give the town some flexibility to proceed with a couple of projects which council and administration have, have sort of prioritized as being important and also time sensitive, specifically one being the soccer fields off of Loop Road. The town council would like us to make those available, from what I understand, Director Howell can clarify if I'm wrong, for the upcoming soccer season. Because of that short time window, unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to construct a permanent parking lot with paved, you know, a paved parking lot with all the required landscaping and to have that go through the entire site plan process and approval at the staff level. So, the purpose is to enable us to do projects like that on town-owned properties. The other one, that's another project coming through, is Fire Station Number One. The town's fire department would like to add some modular offices at Fire Station Number One. And adding language to our code to enable us to be able to get that project through is important, so. So, a couple of things to mention, we advocate keeping the change sort of minor in scope. As you know, we do have the UDC rewrite project, which is about to begin. And so, we would like to take more of an extensive revisitation of temporary uses and structures during that project itself, perhaps adding more in the way of temporary uses for other zoning districts. And then, the second thing to mention is that other zoning districts currently, they, we do have some options for temporary uses. Specifically, I can think of one project that is about to come through our, our, our planning office where they're looking to construct a temporary building and we're making them, we're making them comply with all of the UDC standards for zoning, land, or landscaping, parking, all of that stuff. And then, they're going to remove that building and then construct a permanent building on that site, and they're doing it as a phased project. So, the temporary building is phase one, and then, when they come in with phase two, part of that will be to take the building out and we'll ensure that that gets done through all of our permitting and things like that. So, there are some options, there's some wiggle room right now for temporary uses in other zoning districts. So, yeah, I'll go to the next slide. This is just a quick overview of kind of what's contained in the proposed addition to the code, and I'll pull that up in just a moment here. But for temporary structures, we have ten standards which we listed. You know, subject, if you'd like, we can make any revisions or, you know, take some out, add some new standards to it. For temporary parking, we're saying, we're proposing that it may be unpaved, so it could be gravel or grass. There is a provision currently in the code for grass parking. However, it has to be approved by the engineering department and it's very, very, very rarely allowed. So, also for parking, will not require existence of a structure on site, so you could have a lot with just a parking lot on it, doesn't have to have a building. We would require an approved site plan and zoning permit for the temporary parking spa, or area. It would be exempt from VUA landscaping standards, so currently, we have standards where each parking lot island has to have a canopy tree. And you can have no more than ten spaces in a row. We have various other standards related to Birmingham to ensure that the, the parking area is screened properly. So, being temporary, we would exempt those standards. And then, for permit renewal, we're proposing that the temporary uses in structures will require a permit. It will be done at the staff level, valid for one year, and then renewable, subject to those ten standards that I mentioned above. So, let me just pull up the proposed language itself really quickly. So, this should be in your packet, but the proposed language, as I mentioned, just keeping it minor in scope. I would have a section on scope, then intent, and then moving on to temporary structures. And then, I'll scroll down here for the ten standards I was proposing. So, not to be placed on a slab or foundation. A slab or foundation obviously would, would be something that would be more for a permanent structure. It would not be allowed to be placed in a right-of-way of a street. It would have to meet all current zoning standards for dimensions, that includes building height, impervious surface, setbacks from the road and from lot lines. It would have to have active building and zoning permits. As I mentioned, a site plan and construction drawings would have to be submitted to us and approved. Would have to conform to any structural strength and uplift requirements for a temporary building. They would need to show the occupancy, how they could get in and out of it, as well as the, the load for all temporary structures. It would have to have a fire extinguisher that's consistent with the state building code. No permanent alterations to the site would be allowed if we were allowing a temporary structure. And it would not be allowed to interfere with any normal operations of a permanent use that's already located there. And then, just scrolling down, as I mentioned, I already kind of went over the parking that we're proposing. And then, permit renewal as well, so those kind of were covered in the last slide. And this is the final slide, so essentially, we're just asking you to discuss it. Recommend any amendment options that you'd like us to make, give us your thoughts on it. I apologize, there is a typo there, it says resource conservation areas, that should say temporary structures for public facilities. That was an oversight. So, yeah, just recommendation for public hearing and consideration by town council would be the next step. In accordance with our town ordinances, we have not noticed this yet, there's only a requirement for a published notice in the newspaper. And then, depending on the outcome here, we would issue the public notice for, I think we're looking at April 18th for the town council. So, that's it for me. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Can y'all hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I've got a question, and I'm very conflicted on, on this question because I truly believe that the town council and the town loses some credibility when they don't require the same thing out of themselves as they do the private sector. One thing that really bothers me on this is it appears that this temporary permit can become permanent by every year, the planning director can say, "I'm renewing that, I'm renewing that, I'm renewing that." And then, if Ben goes on to be assistant town manager, to be a teacher at UNC Chapel Hill, whatever he does in the future, you know what I mean? It's like twenty years from now, you know, it's just, oh, it's just been there forever, you know? And that, that really bothers me, but the biggest thing that bothers me the most is how can we sit here and say, "We want to require this of you." And not only if it's the private sector that's for profit, it would be like if it was the YMCA or if it was a church that said, "Hey, we want to put a field in behind the church for church league softball." You could say, "It's kind of the same use, but you've got to do this." So, that personally, personally bothers me, but I'm, I might be, and I know this is just a recommendation, and I might be the sole voice that, that voices this, that I'm not doing the same thing where we require the private sector to do, and also having the unlimited extensions bothers me just on a core level, so just wanted to state that.
Any other board member? Also, I must concur with Board Member Lipscomb, that's the thing that I noted, the internal nature of it, how it could be abused and it just goes on forever, and then we look up ten years from now and it's a permanent structure, temporary structure, or a permanent grass parking lot. That's my major concern, and I didn't know if the planning board thought about a limitation on the, on the renewals, such as a six-month initial with a six, up to one six-month renewal, or a year with up to one-year renewal.
Understood, yeah. Yeah, and if I may, those are both valid comments, I would say. That's something as well that I was considering when we were working on this. So, yeah, I was thinking for the, the renewal of the permitting, you know, if, if you'd like, we could make, we could make an amendment to the language, adding some provision in there that would limit, sorry, that would limit however many renewals of the permit that someone would be allowed to request. I think that would be something fair to add, for sure. And as well, as, as far as requiring it or allowing it for public facilities and not the private sector, that's also a valid comment, I would say. And that's, you know, that's something that Director Howell and I spoke about. Again, like I mentioned, we, we would like to revisit this language and then look at expanding the use of temporary facilities for other zoning districts more in, as a expansive thing as part of the, the rewrite of the UDC. So, so, yeah, that's definitely something that we want to look at, but we didn't feel like doing something that extensive at this moment would be wise, just knowing that the whole code's gonna get a good look coming up here in the next year. So, we wanted to keep it kind of focused and limited with respect to some of the projects that council and administration would like to prioritize at this time, so. But yes, I definitely understand the concerns.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
For the viewing audience, for the record, there are no members of the public in the audience tonight. That being said, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? Yes, sir. Board Member Powers?
With the, with the comments that were made just a moment ago, both sides here, can, can we table this? And you guys had an amendment or a change verbiage here and there about the, how long it can be extended out? And maybe not who it covers right now, but at least something like that, would that be appropriate?
Yes, I think so. My only question, I just want to confirm with Director Howell, is in terms of the timeline for the Loop Road project and as well the Fire Station Number One project, is there some concern over that, or?
Delaying this text amendment, the only concern really on it, on any project, would be potentially the Loop Road project. The town's already working, you know, towards making, making some usable fields out there, but until this text amendment is passed, there's nothing else the town would be able to do out there. So, there is potential for being able to push back the opening of the Loop Road fields with pushing back the text amendment, but I don't have major concerns about that at this time.
If I may.
Board Member Lipscomb?
I'm gonna probably vote no on this, just because I believe the town should hold themselves to the same standards, but also looking at it from the two council members that are in attendance and what they're trying to do out there, I think that we deserve to send them something, either yes or no, or a, or a recommend approval with a year or two-year timeframe. So, I would say that even though I'm gonna probably vote no against this, that we might want to consider that because I think we'll be putting the council members in a very hard situation. Because, again, I know that the need is there, I'm making this statement. We should have thought about this a year ago or two years ago, the way we make the private sector think about it, so that's my two cents.
Can I ask this question? Could, could we approve? Could we approve this as it relates to the Loop Road project? And make that subject to the Loop Road then fitting into whatever change language happens between now and the next time? Is it possible to do it, basically, so Loop Road doesn't get delayed?
Yeah, I think it's possible. The, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but the Loop Road project, really what we're needing there is some kind of temporary parking is kind of what's up for delay, possibly, possibly not, so I could, go ahead.
So, I mean, while this, while the Loop Road project was one of a couple of different town projects that have been discussed that would warrant this text amendment, this text amendment is general, so it is, we cannot, we would not be able to target this text amendment. It's not targeted just to Loop Road. So, but, I mean, there, as Mr. Lipscomb mentioned, you know, I mean, there's, you can certainly table it and ask us to come back with some additional language. Or, as Mr. Lipscomb mentioned, you can also move it forward today with the direction that we add in language, you know, specific to limiting the number of extensions. But, I mean, either way, it, it really is up to, up to the planning board. Like I said, I'm not sure how much of an impact holding it, holding this text amendment over for another meeting for the planning board would have on the Loop Road project itself. But there are, there are, I do want to say that's just one of several town projects that the town is looking at, and one of several reasons the town is, has directed the staff to, you know, prepare this amendment. There's, there's a number of different things going on there where the town has talked about needing some more flexibility with temporary uses. And so, that's why we did, while, you know, we, we did try and write this amendment fairly broadly to address some different, some, several different needs that the town is gonna have over the next couple of years with, in regards to temporary uses. So, it's, while Loop Road is just one example, but there are several others out there, but I do, you know, Mr. Lipscomb is right. I mean, this is an opportu, an example of where we, you know, if this amendment is approved, it is treating the town a little bit differently than private development, so that is certainly a consideration. You know, the planning board should take into account, and I know certainly the town council will take into account as well.
So, I have a question. Yes, so, to Board Member Lipscomb's point and more, is there any reason we can't confirm an edit tonight that would bring the, you know, the limits extension to a fair state and, and then be able to vote on it in that way? I know there, there was language, you had mentioned, it's, there's gonna be a whole rewrite. My only concern with that would be that, you know, how long is that gonna take? Would you, sorry, would you actually get to that part of it? Is that actually going to be rewritten? We'd be saying yes based on, oh, it's gonna be rewritten later, right, would be my thought. So, is there any way to establish the edits tonight? Vote on them as a recommendation to say, you know, for town council, so that also keeps moving and gets it to town council and addresses the Loop Road issue?
Yes, yes, absolutely. If you'd like, you could recommend certain specific edits, I guess. One, an easy one, I think that everyone so far has mentioned is the, the limitation on how many renewals you can have of the permit. That's, that's certainly something that we could easily add. And you could, you know, you could condition the, your recommendation on that edit. As far as the, how to, you know, treat the town facilities, I'm not really sure how you'd wanna word that edit or that, that addition to the text, but that's something we could add as well. So, yeah, you could make some sort of conditional recommendation of approval based on some ed, some edits to the text that we would take to council. So, yeah.
Thank you. I might defer, I'm sorry, sorry about that.
Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Okay, I got it. So, I entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend text, text amendment 2022-51-0A, uses of public facilities.
If we need to be specific.
I'm gonna vote no against this, I don't want to make a, a motion that's gonna fail or, so, I don't know where everybody else stands, because I, because I am conflicted, because I see what the council is trying to do, but I'm, but if I had to make a motion, I'd make a motion to deny based off of it treating the town differently than it requires of everybody else. And I think the town should be the leaders, and they should be setting the standard, not being exempt from the standard.
If I can't, I wouldn't know how to word that, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm transparent here. I wouldn't know how to word that, I, I agree with what Board Member Lipscomb is saying, so if we could, for me, if I could approve it, I would, if we could adjust those, that verbiage and put in some extensions, or limit to the extension.
As I stated earlier, a board member could make a motion on any timeline of approving the recommendation with initial approval by the planning director of six months, with one, up to one renewal of six months, or they could say three months and up to, or a year, so it could be a motion made in that manner. Yes, Board Member Powers?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the stipulation that the renewing of the permits are limited to one year with a renewal of one. And the recommendation to staff and maybe town council to look at the, how these, how this is affecting the town and private development, it should be the same, but I would hesitate to stop everything while that was being straightened out, if, if that's okay as a vote.
So, we're gonna go with the first sentence of your motion, I think you had a motion and some commentary, you know, I just want to be clear so we can get it for the record. So, your motion is to approve the planning staff's recommendation of one year approval by the planning director with a renewal up to one year.
With only one extension.
Yeah, with one extension of one year, up to one year. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Board Member Powers and a second by Board Member Begley. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay, no. We have two noes. Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is text amendment 2022-52-0A, electronic gaming operations. We're now here for staff.
Good evening, and planning board members. This amendment, tonight- Good evening, planning board members. This amendment tonight, again, it's another text amendment, and we are going to try and not bring you very many more of these as we get started on our UDC, UDC update. But, we do, you know, these are just a couple of ones that have been lingering out there that we wanted to get through. This one is consider, is in relation to electronic gaming operations. It's a, would be, it would amend section 202 and then would also add a definition into section 802. Again, the purpose is to prohibit electronic gaming operations within town planning jurisdiction. And this is the request, the reason for the request is that the, these type of uses have generally been considered to be prohibited because they're not listed anywhere. However, there has been some case law over the last couple of years that really, really pushes and, and really states that in order to truly prohibited use, you should have it outright listed in your ordinance as a prohibited use. So, that's what we are doing here. So, again, just the proposed amendment for section 202 is to add in electronic gaming operations into the list of uses not permitted in the town. And then in section 802, we add in the definition of electronic gaming operation, which is a definition that we found, this definition's very similar to those that Town of Garner and Town of Cary both have a definition very similar. So, we did do research of surrounding jurisdictions to try and find a definition that works. And this definition does, or should, cover both the quote unquote internet sweepstakes that are both prohibited by state statute as well as internet sweepstakes that may not be directly prohibited by state statute but are, have been in the past not, not deemed a use that is wanted here in the town. And so, the approval criteria here, and this is the same information that was in your staff report in the packet, the proposed text amendment is consistent with the remainder of the chapter and meets the intent of the code. The text amendment updates the code to address recent case law stating that prohibited uses should be specifically stated as prohibited. The text amendment corrects an error in that electronic gaming operations are not addressed in the code and have been generally considered to be prohibited. This text amendment makes that clear that they are prohibited. And finally, the ordinance change, changes are being proposed because of the need to comply with recent case law. And with that, you know, we're, again, we're asking the, for the approval of these amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Yes, Board Member Dupree?
Are there any current businesses in town that this would affect?
Not that are legally operating, no, sir.
Yes. They are sweepstakes machines on Main Street. Any other, wait, Board Member Liskam?
This one seems pretty easy to me, huh? So, I'm not going to go against the grain. So, I move that we adopt a text amendment 20.
We're not there yet.
I'm sorry.
Well, we, save that, save that. Any other questions for staff? Here it ends. And for the record, there are no members of pub, of the public in the meeting tonight. That being said, if there are no more questions for staff, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. We did that. And now we entertain a motion to recommend or not recommend text amendment 2022-52-0A, electronic gaming operations.
I move that we approve text amendment, text amendment 2022-52-0A, electronic gaming operations.
I'll second.
We have a motion made by Board Member Liskam, a second by Board Member Dupree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Planning Director's report, a resolution for identify transportation plan.
All right, thank you. I do not have a presentation for this one, just because I hope this item is relatively easy and short. But, essentially, the town, as you well know, does not currently have a transportation plan. That is one of the recommendations out of the 2045 comprehensive growth plan is to develop and, and adopt a, a comprehensive transportation plan. However, in the unified development code, we do have a couple of sections of the code that specifically reference a transportation plan in regards to the town being able to require developers to provide transportation improvements in certain areas of town. And so, with that, town staff, we've discussed and determined that really we need a resolution that ultimately will be adopted by the council to direct us to treat our, you know, to, to treat some of the documents we already have that have been adopted as our transportation plan, and that's what this does. So, one of the big pieces of it is in the 2045 comprehensive growth plan, the plan included this roadway systems map or roadway system map in, in the mobility chapter. And this was actually specifically put in that comprehensive growth plan as a way, sort of a stopgap to help give us some, some guidance on transportation infrastructure until we can adopt a truly comprehensive transportation plan. And so, what you'll see in the resolution, in the draft resolution that's been provided to you is essentially designating this, the Johnson County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which does cover part of Clayton, or does cover Clayton as well as our comprehensive bicycle plan and the hopefully soon to be adopted comprehensive pedestrian plan, as well as any other plans that may be adopted over the next couple of years or so that would include transportation infrastructure recommendations and treat all of those documents as our transportation plan when it comes to the UDC until we are able to actually develop and adopt a true comprehensive transportation plan. And again, that's primarily so that staff would have documents that we can point to when we just are talking to developers to provide recommendations on transportation infrastructure. And also, we would be able to use these documents when we're reviewing developments to ensure that as development occurs, they are helping the town with developing our transportation infrastructure as we believe it needs to be developed to continue to maintain our growth. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I've got one question. And it's on here, I apologize. But, why don't we always also show our greenway system on here?
So, the greenway system is, and it's also in the comprehen, it's in the comprehensive growth plan. It is a different chapter of that. And then the pedestrian plan will also show, I believe will show a lot of our greenway system as well. So, we do currently use our growth plan recommendations around our greenways with development. So, I think, I think we're relatively covered there, but certainly if that's something that the planning board wanted to recommend, or wanted us to add into the, to the resolution, I'd be happy to add that in before it goes to council.
Personally, I think it would be something that would be great to see if we're looking at one, you know, a one-stop shop, you know, and with us putting the bicycle plan in. I'm a strong advocate for, for the continued growth of our greenway. And I would love to see us, you know, take and adopt greenway standards that allow greenways to happen organically. Because I don't think there's any reason why we can't have some gravel section of greenway and, you know, going ahead and identifying areas that are, that are needed. I see that in other towns. And, but, that's just a comment from me. But, I, I would like to see that bus up to the board.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, sir. Board Member Bennett?
I just have a concern that we are in essence turning a stopgap measure into a permanent thing by basically taking various elements that were meant to be stopgap measures, like you said, and kind of turning them into something permanent. What would this look like if it were adopted as the transportation plan? Would they all stay kind of separate in their own chapters, or would there be a way that they are kind of notified that this is what our comprehensive transport plan is?
So, ultimately, the, the town, our goal and the, and a recommendation from the 2045 growth plan is to adopt a true standalone comprehensive transportation plan. And typically with those type of plans, what you'll see is there would be a chapter on the roadways, and then there would be a chapter on pedestrian facilities and bicycle facilities. Greenways would be covered in, in the plan. And typically what, you know, what I would envision if the town, if and when the town does move forward with developing a comprehensive transportation plan is, you know, we would really look to prob, at least from staff level, we would really look to ensure that we're using the complete streets methodology and policies as part of that plan. In fact, the 2045 growth plan also recommended that the town adopt a complete streets policy, which I could envision being done as part of that adoption of a transportation plan. And to that point, the staff is working to include, or is working to request funding in the upcoming budget year to begin that work on the comprehensive transportation plan. So, hopefully, this truly would be a stopgap measure. It's just, we need, we just really need something designated as our transportation plan from a, from a development regulatory standpoint while we develop a true comprehensive transportation plan that would be Clayton-specific.
Thank you. Any other comments for staff? Thank you. I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? If not, I entertain a motion to either recommend or not, or not recommend the resolution for identify transportation plan.
I make a recommendation that we approve the resolution for identifying the transportation plan.
We have a motion by Board Member Begley. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Appreciate it. We're at the point of informal discussion and of course, public comment, but there are no members of the public tonight. Is there any, is there any queries with the board or discussion amongst the, members present?
I, I've got one, one item. And I know I've stated this before, and I'm going to start stating it at every meeting. I like you guys. I like spending time with you guys. And I'd like to educate this board more. And I would really like for Ben to consider putting on this agenda because we're, we're 41, 42 minutes into this meeting. And I know for myself, you know, I don't schedule anything after this meeting. I can just go home, eat, go to sleep, and do the next day tomorrow. So, if we stayed here for another hour, you know, doing educational stuff, I believe at the last Board of Adjustment meeting, I believe about the whole meeting was, wasn't it just on education and didn't the attorney go over some standards for the board? And I know that the Institute of Government, I believe, does modules that are like 20 to 30 minutes long and it's question and answer. And I really think that everybody can benefit from that. And I know that more than half the board is brand new. And I think that any type of education that we can do to make, make us better citizen servants or, you know, committee members, you know, will be good. And again, even if a meeting ran long and we were here at nine o'clock, I would say, you know, let's skip it. But, as long as you had those modules lined up and say, hey, if we get out of here quick, we have 30 minutes, you know, left over. Let's go ahead and throw it up on the, on the screen and, you know, do that question and answer.
Yeah, and that is something that I'm hoping to, to begin working on. I've just, with the, you're correct, the school of government does have modules. I mean, they're a little out of date now, but, you know, a lot of it is still good information. Just have to look into that and, you know, see whether that's something that the town will need to purchase, or we may already have access to it. So, I've got to look into that. But, that is certainly something that I'm looking to try and implement as we move forward. Just haven't had a chance yet to, to add that in, but that is something I'm hoping to do, especially as we're having shorter planning board meetings, as you mentioned. And I'm, I'm also open if any, if any board members have any specific topics or, or anything in particular they would like to learn more and for, or get more information about or, or learn about or discuss. I'm happy to, you know, find specific training or education material on that topic and bring it to you. So, please feel free to reach out via email and let me know if there's anything in, in specific that you're looking for as well. Yes, sir?
And also, I agree. I, I know the School of Government also offers various, before COVID, in-person trainings and now some Zoom online trainings. I know depending on the town's budget, some of the School of Government courses can be slightly expensive. But, I think the schedule, of course, especially specific to planning, I think that would, if it's Zoom or some short Zoom courses or six to eight hours Zoom courses that they have their schedule out for the rest of 22, would be nice to share with the board also.
I'll certainly be sharing those as I see them. As of right now, they have not come out with anything. I will say, there's a number of the, of courses that they do that are targeted to the professionals. But certainly, as they, you know, as I see or as they come out with anything more targeted to citizen board members, I will make sure to forward that along as opportunities for, for you to take.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other discussion amongst the board? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Board Member Williams? Lee, I got you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Good enough.